The September 13, 2018, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Ms. Felico, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Maslin.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
Mayor Freiling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Here.
Mr. Zheng.
Here. Before us, we have the council minutes from August 6 and August 9, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mayor, the only change that's been made to the council minutes is Councilman Maslin pointed out that there was an error in the attendance record, and we've corrected that.
Thank you, Mr. Trivitt.
With those changes, I'll move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zheng.
Aye.
We have no matters of special privilege today, and we have no public hearings, which takes us right to reports. Mr. Trivitt, anything you'd like to highlight in the monthly financial statement?
You know, this month, since we've got a relatively short meeting, anyway, I'm going to ask Ms. Dameron to come up and go over the financial report for you.
Welcome, Ms. Dameron.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Freiling and members of City Council. You have in your packet the August financial report. There are some minor differences. They look a little different. I'd like to walk through some of those changes that relate to the Tourism Fund, as well as some comparisons to previous, how we compared to previous year and to budget. And so, starting on page one, which is your general fund revenue, if you'll look at the bottom right-hand side of that page, subtotal general fund revenue, you'll see that our revenues are down about $215,000 compared to last year this time. Now, a portion of that relates to the $2 lodging tax. If you'll notice on the left-hand side, that shows zero. That's because we're now reporting that $2 lodging tax in the Tourism Fund on page four, which we will take a look at just shortly. Another factor contributing to that is the reduction in meals tax for the current period. And again, we'll look at that in a little more detail on some of our sheets where we look at that information pulled out a little bit differently. Along with that, if you'll look, again, toward the bottom of that page on the right-hand side, our transfer to and from surplus is just where we, our revenues do not come in level timing with our expenditures. And you'll note that this year compared to last year, we had to pull about another $2 million to match our revenue spending, I mean, our expenditure, sorry. What that relates to in part is the $215,000 that we see reduction in revenue we just talked about. And if you'll look on page two and expenditures, our expenditures for the, for this year to date compared to last year this time is about 1.7 million more. Now, about half a million of that relates to the timing of the extra payroll period we have. We saw that earlier in August this year than we did last year, and that accounts for about half a million. And about a million of that is attributed to the timing of when we paid outside agencies. So, this year, we got those checks out in August. Last year, it was September before we got the, those checks in the mail. And then, if you look at page four, that's the Tourism Fund, and you'll see that year-to-date, we've received $329,738 in revenue, and we have expended $369,869. I'll draw your attention on the revenue side to the $2 lodging tax. You'll see that we received $119,738, and we have as payable to the state under expenditures on the Historic Triangle Marketing, $59,869. We've not yet transferred that to the state. We're still working with them on the logistics of how we're going to do that. And then, if you'll turn to page six, we'll see the breakout of the room tax, meals tax, and sales tax. And you'll note that the meals tax for the current period that we're recognizing now is down about 8.9% for this period. Year-to-date, we're down 1.7% for rooms tax. I think I misspoke. That's a rooms tax. On the meals tax, for the period where it held its own just up slightly, but year-to-date, we're up 4%. You'll also note on sales tax, year-to-date at the moment, we're up 27%. I will tell you, and I'll jump for it just a little bit. I just got the sales tax in today. I have not had time to analyze it for August. It is, it is below what we normally receive, so we're going to research that. My concern being that perhaps during these periods where we saw an increase in the range of 30% to high 20%, that maybe we have some transfers going on. But I haven't had time to investigate that, so that'll be for the September report, and we'll have answers for you then. Just want to give you a heads-up on that.
Transfers, do you mean revenues that are being allocated to the city that should have been allocated to the counties?
Correct. Correct. And, you know, we had some of that last year. So, I'm not saying that's what it is. As I stated, I just got that number today and have not had time to really investigate it, but...
The other thing that seems like it, that might have contributed to it, and do your investigation, don't take my word for anything, but if we were giving up revenue to make up for revenue that had previously been overpaid to us, if we were doing that last year, and then we don't have to do that this year, that could cause this year's revenue to be higher just compared to last year, if that makes any sense?
It does, but I would not have expected to see that, the decrease that I saw in September. But that, that was my first thought when we saw it earlier, is that we were not having to have the transfers to another locality. But we'll check into that and report back on that next month. But that concludes my report. Be glad to entertain any questions.
Just going back to the $2 taxing, just for my clarification. So, we collect the $2 tax from the hotels. We have to then split it. Half goes to the state. They have to hold it and then send it back down to the Tourism Council. Is that correct?
That is correct. Right. And so, we're still, in fact, several, myself, Bob Harris from the Tourism Alliance, and then the Finance Directors from James City County and York County will be visiting in Richmond, speaking with the Deputy Secretary of Finance to try to work out some of those logistics.
Maybe we can work out also some of the logistics of making sure that each municipality receives the right amount of sales tax.
Thank you for your clarification, Barbara. Appreciate it.
No comments, except I noticed that the 1% tax coming into the Tourism Fund hasn't shown up yet for, for August.
Right. We would receive that in September, and as of now, I just have the one transmittal, and that's another thing that we're working on, is that the only transmittal we're going to get. Our concern being, we really don't want to have the half cent coming from the historic tax mixed in with that because of the change in groceries, so...
Nearly impossible to separate it.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Well, wouldn't it be better to say half, half percent there, because we're only getting half of the 1%? Is that correct?
Right. That's correct.
The other half will stay with us.
Goes into that same Tourism Council.
But we'll show it in the Tourism Fund, correct. I will point out one good thing. We did have one increase on the general fund revenue, and that was a 25% increase in our rental income. So, and that's not a timing difference. That's a true increase, so...
A couple of questions. On one, page one, yeah, thanks for explaining how we magically balance the year-to-date between expenses and revenue. So, the $5 million that we take from surplus to do that balance, where, what line item in this report do I see the surplus coming from, and what's the balance left in that surplus?
You don't really see a line item on here. You would be looking at a balance sheet, because what we're showing you basically is revenue and expenditures, but it would be your fund balance if we had a, if we were showing a balance sheet.
And what does that amount, that we've got left in surplus after we take the $5 million?
Well, we're in the, in the process of closing the books now, but I'm, it's in the realm of $33 million. We keep a fund balance of 35% in the general fund of revenues, and then any additional will go to your sales tax fund.
On page two, Community Development, contributions to other entities, it looks like...
I'm sorry. Let me back up to the 30-some million that I, 33, is really your total fund balance. Your unassigned is in the, about 12.8 million.
So, yeah, on page two, Community Development, contributions to other entities, it looks like we're, we've spent 95% of our budget for the year for that. Is that because we front-load to other agencies?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay. And then, on page three, we had a total adjusted budget for parking study implementation of zero, and we spent $54,000. What's the discrepancy there?
On page three, under the parking, let me...
It's under Public Safety.
Public Safety, yeah.
Okay. I, I need to follow up on that. I know that some of that could be coming from carryforwards from the current year that aren't showing.
That's exactly what I... The two, two projects in previous fiscal years were consolidated to create the budget for that project, and so, that's not new money for this fiscal year. It's being charged back to that historical balance.
Right.
Okay. And, and this is the, under the heading of, the page is under the heading of Sales Tax Fund. So, at the bottom, Total Expenditures and Incumbrances, it looks like we've spent 44% of the budget during the first two months. Is there any concern with that spend rate?
No, because some of that, we're also combining some of our encumbret balances in there as well. And we may want to look at pulling that out just a little bit differently so that shows clearly. And that encumbret balance being contracts are things that we're already committed to but not yet expended.
And then, finally, on page four, which is Tourism Fund, where we've got the tourism marketing expenses, especially the big ones for Chamber Commerce and CW, it looks like we've, we've spent $200,000 of the $800,000 for the Chamber Commerce, nothing for CW. How are, how are those timed? In other words, do they have to submit requests at certain points during the year, or...
Right. I believe that we will be seeing, I'm not sure. I'll have to follow back up on the timing of CW.
What we traditionally have done is paid the Chamber quarterly.
Yes.
So, it may not be actually exactly quarterly, but in four payments throughout the year. And then, the Colonial Williamsburg money usually goes right at the end of the calendar year.
That's, that's...
So, from the Business Council side...
Colonial wasn't, was the one I wasn't sure of. I knew that the, the other we did on a quarterly basis.
Historically, I think, I may get the date wrong, but I think we paid that around December the 15th, and it is a lump sum payment.
Yeah. And for the Chamber, that $200,000 is just reflecting the recent remittance to the Chamber from the business, to the Business Council side, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Is that it? Thank you, Ms. Dameron. This takes us to monthly departmental operating reports. Mr. Trivitt, anything you'd like to highlight?
Not really that I'd like to highlight. I think you have all the reports if there are any questions. I did want to take the opportunity to invite Chief Dent to come up and talk to us a little bit about the current situation with Hurricane Florence.
Welcome, Chief Dent.
Thank you. Mayor Freiling, members of City Council, just take a few moments to update you on the city's preparations with Hurricane Florence. As I know, most people are aware that the storm has taken a track that was much different than originally projected. Unfortunately, it's, it's going to impact the Carolinas, and we wish the best for them. With the turn that it took in the track to the south, it obviously minimized the impacts that are predicted for Williamsburg. The great thing about the city is we were prepared, and we still are prepared, in the event something were to change. Our Emergency Operations Center, our staffing roster is prepared. We're ready to activate. At this point, based on the most current trends, we don't think that's going to be necessary at this point. We also were able to, our, thanks to Parks and Recreation and Human Services, our shelter at Quarter Path Recreation Center is prepared if that need arises. I know that it's probably familiar to everyone in the audience that the state decided to open a state-managed shelter at William &amp; Mary. We've visited that site on several occasions. As of today, at 11:00 a.m., they still had no evacuees there, but there is anticipation that they may see some evacuations, evacuees from North Carolina and South Carolina. Also, the great, when we have an event like this, is it gives us an opportunity to go through an exercise of preparing our Emergency Operations Center. We've been able to identify some additional tools that will help us through an event like this. Thanks to IT, we've added a couple additional tools, some GIS mapping, and some other different tools that would help us through an event like this. Additionally, we've identified some, maybe some gaps that we need to work on, some of our messaging and, but we'll debrief as, once this storm passes and make sure that we address those gaps in the future. But I just want to assure everyone that we, we are prepared. We have been prepared. And most of all, is to encourage everyone to continue to monitor the storm, because as we all know, the track of these storms can change very rapidly. So, we're going to continue to monitor and be prepared if those conditions change so that we can meet the needs of the community.
And I guess it's also helpful to note that we have about another two months of hurricane season to go. So, just because one storm may pass doesn't mean anything is over.
It's a little daunting to look at the tropics right now with all of the storms that are out there. Fortunately, they're not predicted to impact us at this time, but it's still fairly early in the most, this is the period that we're most vulnerable for hurricane development.
Questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of questions. On the, the shelter that the state is standing up there now, how does that change our decision-making in terms of whether to open our shelter or not? Because they've got the capacity for, what, 728 beds. Would we take that into consideration and say that maybe we could wait a little longer?
Yes. And unfortunately, one of the gaps we've identified is it wasn't communicated very well to us, to the city, that that was the plan to open that state-managed shelter. That could have prevented us from, from staffing, you know, having everything prepared for our shelter. So, we're going to, we're going to work with the state on that to work on that communication process. Actually, William &amp; Mary, currently, they've only set up half of that shelter. It's actually designed to house about 1,400 evacuees, so they've only set up half of it. And with the ability to set up the other half if the need arises. But it could have certainly changed the model that, of us setting up our shelter if we had known the state-managed shelter. Again, the, the message from the state is, is for evacuees to find a place to stay with friends or a hotel, go to a local shelter, their next step, and then the state shelter as a last resort.
The other thing to keep in mind is that, you know, the earlier that the state announces that they're going to open a shelter like this one this time, the more localities in the region decide exactly what you just said, Mr. Maslin, which is, we're not going to open our shelter. We're going to direct our public to go to the state shelter, because then we can avoid that cost and the, the operational man, management requirements of the shelter itself. So, we would need to keep that in mind, because what we don't want to do is end up with a shelter that's managed by the state that's at capacity and no plans to open ours, so...
And then, what about in terms of signage? Are we doing anything to direct people who are coming from maybe Zone A, maybe in the future Zone B, to this location?
As far as signage?
Yeah, in terms of people driving into Williamsburg and how to get there and...
To the state-managed shelter?
Yeah.
Actually, we, we were, we were a little surprised when we went there that there's no, there's no direction even at the, unless you were familiar with the tennis center, there's no direction there. I think if you, if you have the address, once you arrive in the area with the, for anyone that's visited the site and see the number of tractor trailers and state trooper vehicles and all the support vehicles that are there, that you would know that that was, that was the center, the state-managed shelter. Obviously, like any plan, I'm sure they're going to identify some, some improvement areas for their plan. But I know, my 38 years in the fire service in this, in the peninsula region, they've never opened a state-managed shelter. So, this is a, this is a first time. And to operate a state-managed shelter at Christopher Newport and at William &amp; Mary, obviously, there's, I'm sure they're going to go back and identify some strengths and weaknesses for the state as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Dent.
Thanks.
Anything else, Mr. Trivitt?
No, sir.
Anything any individual councilman would like to highlight on operating reports?
Yeah. Question for IT on the eComment. So, if we look at eComment on our website, there are two tabs. One of them has, the tab says Ideas. And if we look in that, there are four ideas there that date back three to four years. Nothing earlier than that or later than that. And then, on the eComment for the specific meeting, you know, for the last two out of three times I've checked it, it's been out of service before the meeting. So, are we, and I don't know if this is more of a communications question, but are we really having an effective, you know, system here?
Sure. We have, we've identified procedural issues as well as backend vendor issues that are, that are resulting in what you've seen the past couple of, of meetings. We've identified those issues. We'll be working to correct those issues. We believe we have a plan in place that will, that will mitigate that for, for any future meetings. So, it will be, it's, it's, I will, I will tell you, it's a rarely-used resource. So, if, if, once we get it fixed, I wouldn't expect much change to that, but we will get it fixed because it is an advertiser resource that we'll make sure works in the future.
And one thing I'll add to that is, just as a forecast for the council to be aware of, the IT Department is looking at alternatives to the software that we currently use, because the software that we have is really designed for the broadcast side of what we do and not toward the agenda management side of what we do. Arguably, the agenda management is the more important function of the monthly City Council meeting. And so, we're going to be looking at ways to reduce costs associated with that software, and that may mean switching vendors, a completely different platform, which would mean an entirely different process.
Okay, great. This takes us to City Manager Reports, Legislative Agenda Development Kickoff.
Sure. So, it is that time of year again, when we start thinking about the Richmond activities and the General Assembly convening. And so, at this meeting, historically, we present kind of the kickoff plan. And so, here is the timeline for this year's legislative session. It begins in September. As we start to put together the, the thought process on what the calendar is going to look like, in October, we'll come back and present to you a draft of the agenda. And that's largely based on the legislative issues that have come up since the session ended, as well as issues that we think might be brought back to the table from last General Assembly. We also look at, I'm going to show you a slide in a minute, a whole host of other legislative agendas that are put together across the state to consider items that might be of interest to the city. So, then, in, let's see, let's get back. November, we come back to you for adoption of that plan, and that will set the course for our legislative activity this coming session. Now, keep in mind that because we're adopting that legislative agenda in November, and the session really doesn't convene until we get to January, there's a lot of things that could change with bills that are added to legislative session last minute or even at the filing deadline. And the city, of course, has to react to those. Also, during the session, agendas change frequently because the actual legislative items that have been introduced are changed on the floor or in committee. And items that may not have impacted the city at all suddenly have a major impact. So, just because it's not in the legislative agenda that we produce doesn't mean that we're not actively working on it in Richmond. So, our process continues then in December with a legislative event. Historically, that's been a meeting here with our legislators to go over our important issues and to hear what they forecast is upcoming in the session. And then, of course, as I, as I said here, the agenda this year, the legislative session will begin in January, and it will continue on through February. It is the long session, I'm sorry, the short session this year, because it is an odd-numbered year. So, it should be pretty interesting to see how it all comes off. So, as we, as I said, when we put together the legislative agenda, we look at a whole host of our partner organizations and what they consider to be priorities. This is a list of them. The major changes this year from last year is that I have swapped out WADMAC for the Tourism Council. So, we'll be expecting them to consider legislative issues also, and we'll borrow from their thoughts as we put together our agenda. I know that a lot of these organizations have already started working on their agendas. The advantage to us is that we do it just slightly late enough that we can take advantage of, like, the HRPDC's planning efforts and piggyback on those, which really helps us considering our legislative staff consists of one. So, we'll take advantage of everything that we can. And so, if there are any questions, that's the legislative agenda as we move into 2019.
Questions, comments?
In terms of support organizations, we also include Virginia First Cities, right?
That's right.
Because we're in the jurisdiction.
Absolutely.
And I know for Virginia Municipal League, I sit on their legislative committee, we're going to be adopting our legislative agenda sometime next month by the time VML week happens. So, and I'm aware that I think Virginia First Cities will adopt their legislative agenda soon, too.
Doesn't VML adopt its legislative agenda at the annual meeting?
At the annual meeting. They do. Officially.
First and second of October.
They produce a draft earlier on than that, and then it's adopted by the delegates at the VML conference, which this year will be in Hampton. And VFC, Virginia First Cities, has actually already had their first meeting to talk about what's going to be on their legislative agenda. And so, I'm expecting them to produce one pretty early also.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trivitt.
Thank you.
This takes us to City Attorney Report.
Nothing today.
This takes us to unfinished business. This takes us to new business, consideration and approval of a resolution to increase the FY 2018 budget of the Public Assistance Fund to recognize additional funding from state and federal grants. Ms. Dameron, is that you?
As we're preparing the budget, we're doing that fairly early in the year compared to when the state will prepare their funding for the public assistance. So, it's not unusual that we'll get additional funding and have changes. What is unusual is in the past, it's not been significant enough that we've had to come back and ask to change the budget. And so, this year, we need to request another $160,000 in total in order for us not to exceed the budget from the expenditures that occurred from additional funding.
Straightforward to me.
No questions. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
Do you hear a motion?
I move that Resolution Number 18-09 be approved consistent with the staff recommendation.
Second.
Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zheng.
Aye.
And this takes us to the second item of new business, appointments to boards and commissions.
Mr. Mayor, I have some appointments to move for approval. So, with that, I move to, I move that City Council appoint Barbara Valmer to fulfill the unexpired term of the Williamsburg Area Arts Commission that will end on June 30 of 2021. Also, Scott Spence to an unexpired term on the Architectural Review Board that will end December 31, 2018. Additionally, Caleb Rogers to the unexpired term on the Planning Commission that will end December 31, 2019. And that council reappoint Barbara Dameron to the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission for a term ending June 30, 2022, that began on July 1, 2018.
Second.
Ms. Felico.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zheng.
Aye.
This takes us to the open forum portion of our meeting, and I have two speakers cards. If, when I call your name, if you could come up and state your name and address for the record, and if you could keep your comments to five minutes or less. And once we go through the speakers cards, anybody else who'd like to address council would be welcome to do so. The first is Joan Vaden. Welcome, Ms. Vaden.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Joan Vaden. I live at 402 Harriet Tunnell Drive. I live at 402 Harriet Tubman Drive, and our concern is parking in our neighborhood. We feel like our neighborhood is, we live right here in the city of Williamsburg, and it's a forgotten neighborhood. But we'd like to thank you for the parking signs around the circle. They really made a big difference because we had cars parked in every direction sometimes, and sometimes it's just hard to get through. And another problem with the parking we're having, we were told that you could only get two stickers per household and two guest stickers. Well, we're finding that that's not true because some of the household, especially the rental homes, they have as many as four cars there, you know, four people living in that household, and they have four cars, and each one of those cars has parking stickers, and a lot of these homes have no facility, you know, for the parking people to park. So, what they're doing, they're parking all over the neighborhood, and we, as residents, we have guest stickers. If we have guests, we have nowhere for our guests to park because we have, I know we have at least five rental homes that a lot of the students, I don't have a problem with the students, just a problem with as many cars because most of the students, if you got four students, you got four cars. If you got one house, it has, I know they have at least over five people, and they have five cars, and we're told that they're not supposed to have a sticker for each car, but they do. So, that means if all these cars are parking in the neighborhood, we have nowhere for our guests to park. That's our problem. You know, I don't have problems with the students, but a lot of the homes that have been sold, it looks like they're sold with the intended purpose, you know, for to rent out to the college students, and a lot of our homeowners are living in the house, you know, with the students. So, that's a problem because it seems to me they're buying the homes, I guess, with the intent of the students helping them pay for the home, and we just feel like it's, it's not fair to us as homeowners, and we have to be careful because a lot of times the cars are partially obstructing our drive, and, you know, we have to go out and ask them to move. Some, you know, are not very nice. So, this is some of the problems, and also the car we have on Harriet Tubman, you go around, it's like a curb, excuse me, it's a curb. If that car is parked on the curb and the other car is parked across the street, I almost had a head-on collision because I couldn't see the car until, you know, we were almost hitting each other. So, I mean, we are really, you know, having some problems in our neighborhood, and like I say, the stickers is something that really needs to be addressed in our neighborhood because if we can't get anymore but two resident stickers and two guest stickers, how are the other residents getting extra parking stickers? So, I mean, it's, it's really getting to be a, a big mess, and we just feel like, you know, I've lived there 40 years plus, and we've never had this problem before, and I just feel like, you know, we're not being respected. The students, you know, just feel like they can park anywhere, and like I say, if you don't watch, they'll obstruct your own driveway. So, these are things that we are very concerned, and like I say, if they're going to rent, they have to make sure that they have the space to accommodate all of these vehicles. Otherwise, it, it's, it's going to be a real problem for, well, it is a real problem for us, and like I say, you know, we thank you for the signs that you put around the circle because it, it, it really was a big mess, you know. Cars were parking anyway, and a lot of times, you know, the policemen come through, they didn't really ticket these cars because we, we have certain ways we're supposed to park, but the students were not parking, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaden. Mr. Trivitt? Staff could look into that?
Yes, absolutely. We'll, we'll take a look at that.
Thank you. The next speaker's card is Gladys Carter. Welcome, Ms. Carter.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Gladys Carter. I'm a resident at 401 Harriet Tubman Drive. Like Mrs. Vaden, my problem, too, is parking because I have a handicapped husband, and a lot of times when I have my brother to come to help me out with him, sometimes if he come to do something for him, and he has to go back to work, and I only have one, two visitor stickers. If I give him one visitor stickers and he runs back to work with it, then I'm left with not having a place for him to park, or if he leaves it off his car, he'll get a ticket. And that was one of my concerns about, because a lot of times he does come in during his lunch hour to help out with him for a reason of anything, and the, and it's always a problem. And like Mrs. Vaden said, when you're coming around that curb at the In-N-Out Street, a lot of times people come through that way, and they don't slow down. They come through there flying, and I was like her almost, one day we were going, going out that way, and I almost ran into someone because they was coming around that curb too fast and there was a car there. So, that is a problem. Our other concern is the trees, the big trees that we have in our yards. I know a lot, those are huge trees, and they, roots of them, they're getting into the sewage and things, and a lot of times they've been stopping up the sewage, and you have to call. And every, I would say maybe every two years or so, I myself have been having to call the city to come out and clean out the sewage because I know that's what it's backing up on, and I know they have been down the street to clean it out and try to correct it, but those trees are so huge till they're growing, and some of the limbs are even growing out facing the street, and the concern I have is if we have a really bad, bad storm, it's going to uproot it and fall over on someone's house, and my concern is it will, when we got into that neighborhood, I, like Joan, been in that neighborhood for 40-some years, even though I was milit, my husband's military, and we did move around, but that hasn't been my home for that long or longer, and it was supposed to have been a family-oriented neighborhood, but of course, with the older people passing on, it has not, you know, has grown accustomed to having renters, and that's fine, but like she said, the parking has gotten to be terrible. I think it's gotten worse, it's getting worse. Each year it seemed like it's getting worse, and so we do need to have something done about.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Carter. Would anybody else like to address council? Seeing no one, we'll close the open forum. Do you have a motion?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Ms. Felico?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons?
Aye.
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
We adjourn.